Good evening. Ooh, that's loud. And welcome to the September 23rd, 2024 meeting of the Menlo Park Planning Commission. I am Chair Jennifer Schindler, and I thank you for joining us this evening, either remotely or here in council chambers. Established by state law, our city's planning commission is composed of seven volunteer residents of Menlo Park, appointed to four-year terms by the city council. Our planning commission is not a policy-setting body; that's the city council. We are a policy-implementing body. We review development proposals for compliance with our city's general plan and zoning ordinances, which can both be found on the city's website. The commission also reviews city-initiated land-use planning projects such as general plan updates and zoning ordinance amendments. The commission reviews development proposals requiring a use permit, architectural control, a variance, minor subdivision, as well as the environmental reviews associated with those projects. When applicable, the planning commission reviews below-market rate or BMR housing agreements associated with these applications. The commission is the final decision-making body for these applications unless appealed to the city council. The commission also serves as a recommending body to the city council for major subdivisions, rezoning, conditional development permits, zoning ordinance amendments, general plan amendments, and environmental reviews associated with those projects. If applicable, the planning commission reviews and makes recommendations on BMR agreements associated with these projects. We work closely with the staff in our city's planning division, which is responsible for implementing the general plan, zoning ordinances, and related policies. We encourage your active participation, whether you are an applicant or an interested member of the public, and there will be an opportunity to speak publicly for each specific agenda item, as well as for general public comment. And with that, I will call the role for the planning commission. Commissioner Peruzzi.
Here.
Commissioner Doe.
Here.
Commissioner Sillen.
Here.
I am Chair Schindler, and I am present. Vice Chair Eric, Commissioner Farrick, and Commissioner Silverstein are absent. So for commissioners in chambers is a quorum for all of the decisions and discussion that we need to have tonight. So the next item on our agenda is reports and announcements. Mr. Prada, are there any reports or announcements for the commission this evening?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schindler and members of the planning commission. So just a few updates or reports here from staff. So the first one, the city council does have a meeting tomorrow evening, and on that agenda, the council will be considering the planning commission's recommendation of the environmental justice and safety elements. So it'll be considering whether to adopt resolutions to amend the general plan to include the city's first-ever environmental justice element, and then an update to the safety element. At the same time, the council is also considering a loan agreement for Mid Penn Housing at the VA, sorry, the Veterans Affairs Site on Willow Road to provide $2 million from the city's BMR Housing Special Revenue Fund for construction and development of that affordable housing project. So the planning commission previously reviewed for, as a conformance review, that item or that project is not subject to the city's regulatory process, as it is on federal land, but the city is considering partnering with Mid Penn Housing to help fund that project. So there'd be a potential for appropriation of $2 million being awarded tomorrow evening by the council. So just thought the planning commission might be interested in that, given its review previously of the conformance with the R4 zoning standards. And that concludes my reports and announcements. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that update. I am certainly interested in hearing more about the $2 million potentially going to Mid Penn for the VA's properties. So thank you, I appreciate that. Do other commissioners have any questions about those announcements this evening? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the next section of our agenda, which is public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the commission on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the commission once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. You're not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The commission cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the commission cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. Please know that if you're here tonight to comment on one of our agenda items, you will have a chance to speak when we get to that item on the agenda. And so for the details of how to participate, I'm going to turn to our clerk for the evening, Mr. Hockleitner, to explain in detail how you can participate, and then please to begin our public comment period.
Thank you, Chair Schindler. During the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person, please fill out a speaker card located at the back of the room and hand it to me.
At this time, do we have any hands raised or speaker cards presented?
At the moment, we don't have any hands raised, and I don't have any speaker cards for public comment.
Okay, we'll give it one more moment.
I still don't see any hands raised or speaker cards.
Then I will go ahead and, I'm assuming that's not a hand raised. There was a beep on the video conference.
No, just joining, sorry.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. Then we will go ahead and close public comment and move on to the next section of our agenda. We do not have any items on the consent calendar this morning, or excuse me, this evening. So we will move from consent calendar into F, the public hearing component of our agenda. We have three items in our public hearing this evening, and we will move on, start with F1. This agenda item addresses a use permit for a residence at 256 Marmona Drive. At this public hearing, the commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to add a single-story and remodel an existing non-conforming one-story, single-family residence on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width and depth in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. The proposal would exceed 50% of the existing floor area and is considered equivalent to a new structure. The proposed work would also exceed 50% of the existing replacement value of the existing non-conforming structure in a 12-month period and requires approval of a use permit by the planning commission, and determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQUA Guidelines Section 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. This is an agenda item that was continued from the planning commission meeting on June 24th, 2024. Mr. Hockleitner, I believe this is your project. Are there any updates for the commission?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. I have not received any comments from the public since writing the report. I do have the project owner and their designer are here to answer any questions for you. I believe that the property owner will introduce himself now.
Thank you, welcome. Let's, sorry, let's be sure your mic is hot.
Hello, I'm Greg Dimas, I'm the property owner, just happy to answer any questions about the project. Also have my partner and our designer if we need to answer any questions.
Thank you. If there are no updates from staff, I will ask commissioners, at this time, do commissioners have any clarifying questions with regard to this project and the information in the staff report? Seeing no clarifying requests and clarifying questions from the planning commission, Mr. Hockleitner, could you please provide instructions regarding public comment on this agenda item F1?
Yes, thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, during the public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions. If you are participating remotely, please click star nine on your keypad to notify staff that you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking on the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we'll make sure each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person, please fill out a speaker card located in the back of the room and hand it to me. At this time, I don't have any speaker cards for this item, and I don't have any hands raised.
We'll give it one more moment. Any requests for public comment at this time?
No, Chair.
All right. Given that there are no requests for comment, we will close the public comment period for this particular agenda item and bring the discussion back to the commission here, and ultimately for discussion, questions, and ultimately a motion with regard to this use permit. So I will look to commissioners for questions, comments. Commissioner Peruzzi. I don't, I'm just curious about whether or not there was any more back and forth with the neighbors. It looked like people had some questions about windows and such, and did the plans evolve from then, or did the, were people satisfied? I mean, nobody's here making public comments, so I'm just curious, though, how those discussions wound up.
Happy to comment. So we asked the neighbors on the direct boundaries with the property for their comments, we went and visited them. One of the neighbors, actually both, two neighbors, one behind the house and one to the side of the house, were curious about the windows and just how the new windows in the second floor would, you know, face some of the, just how they would face some of the windows from the neighbors' properties. We did incorporate their comments into the design. So there was one window in particular that was facing a bedroom, and we essentially occluded it, we moved it and occluded it. So, you know, I'm, my understanding is all the comments have been addressed. There was a similar thing in the backyard window. My understanding is that they've been addressed, and I've talked with the neighbors, and I'm not aware of any concerns.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Commissioner Sillen.
Thank you. Through the chair, I would, I'm just curious, from the applicant's point of view, I noticed that there are some accommodations made regarding parking and FAR specifically. There's a garage that was a bedroom and is being turned back into a garage in order to meet those requirements, and there's a porch where the supports are being removed in order to get a little bit of additional, or I guess, lower the FAR coverage. I assume it would say in the application if you felt otherwise, but I'm just wondering if those are things you are doing simply to meet the city's rules, or those are things that you would like to have the garage turned back into a garage and the porch without supports?
Yeah, those are good questions. I think, let me look at the garage. So when we purchased the home, I think it was about six years ago at this point, the garage had already been converted into a room. We actually want a garage, I would actually personally like a garage, because otherwise we have to just put our cars outside. So, you know, the garage, I think, is a plus. I think, that's just, okay, that's just my opinion. I think the, the other piece is the, sorry, I'm not sure what the right technical term for it is, but the patio, the entrance, and like the overhang for the entrance. I don't have a strong opinion about it one way or another. I think, you know, from a, my understanding, it was required, and, you know, we're happy to accommodate a requirement.
Thank you. And just a quick clarifying question for staff. I noticed that the report says that the driveway doesn't count as official uncovered parking per the city's rules, and I'm just curious what this distinction would be between what is allowed and this sort of non-conforming situation for the uncovered space.
Sure. So for required parking, you need to have, the city's zoning code requires that you have at least one covered and one uncovered parking space outside of the required front yard setback, or any setback for that matter. Because we have a lot of houses that were built prior to the zoning code regulations, or they were annexed into the city at different times, we do have a lot of houses that just have a single-car garage with no other outside parking space. And so we allow these non-conforming parking situations to continue without having to add that second outdoor parking space outside of the required front setback. So while it will still be a parking space, it does not meet the zoning code requirements for an uncovered space outside of the required front setback.
Thank you, that's clear. I don't have any more questions. I think it's a good project, the neighbors' concerns seem to have been addressed, I'm assuming, since there's no comments tonight, and the applicant has stated that all the concerns were met, and it seems like based on the emails provided and the window locations that was done, so I'm happy to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sillen. Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Sillen, for your comments. Was that a first? Or no, okay. Well, I'll, I'll just say, I am also supportive of this staff's recommendation to approve this project. I think the two non-conforming items highlighted, the parking situation that Commissioner Sillen just brought up, and then the existing left-side, non-conforming side setback, I think are entirely reasonable, and I'm also supportive and I'm happy to make a motion to approve this as recommended by staff, but not to preclude any comments that the chair has. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe. I'll add my brief comments and appreciation, and then go ahead in second. But I do want to say that I appreciate the effort and expense that I'm sure went into making the changes associated with the garage to meet the FAL requirements, as well as the parking requirements. And I do appreciate particularly the modifications responding to feedback about the windows, moving and making more translucent, you know, the window that could potentially be a concern today or in the future to whomever is a neighbor. Good neighbors are happy neighbors. So thank you for that, and I'm happy to offer a second to that motion. Any further discussion? All right. Then with that, I will go ahead and call a vote on the motion. Commissioner Peruzzi.
Yes.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sillen.
Yes.
And I am also a yes, that is, four yeses and three absences, and the motion carries. Congratulations, good luck, thank you for being here this evening. We do have a lot of fun here, you're welcome to stay. Ms. Begon, we're going to move on now to F2. This is an agenda item that addresses a use permit for a residence at 316 Princeton Road. The commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to demolish an existing single-story, single-family residence and detached garage, and construct a new two-story, single-family residence with a basement on a substandard lot with regard to minimum lot width in the R1U, or Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Determine this action is categorically exempt under SEQUA Guidelines Section 15303's Class 3 exemption for new construction or conversion of small structures. The proposal also includes a future detached accessory dwelling unit, or ADU, which is a permitted use and not subject to discretionary review. I believe we have a brief presentation this evening?
Yes, we have a brief presentation from the applicant team.
Perfect, thank you.
They're also available to answer questions.
Great. So is there any additional staff update before we begin with the applicant's presentation?
There are no additional updates, so right now.
Thank you, Ms. Begon. Can we pull up the applicant's presentation and make sure we can see it on the Zoom?
Give me just one second.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to thank the zoning committee.
Can you just move the microphone just a little bit closer, just so we can be sure that folks who are maybe listening online have the full benefit?
Is that good?
That's great, thank you.
Okay. First of all, I would like to thank the zoning committee and city staff for your time and consideration this evening. My name is Sepi Amin, the designer of the project, and I'm joined in by Ali Zaki from Alkan's Group, our construction partner in this design-built project. We are also having Mr. Kamal, the homeowner, tonight with us. Our project is collaborative effort between our team, Planning Department of City of Menlo Park, and our client, John and Fay, who have a vision to create a beautiful new residence at this property. This project, as Chair Schindler mentioned, is demolishing the existing one-story, single-family and detached garage. We are proposing a new two-story with a basement and detached ADU. This new will serve a residence for John and Fay, and for a short period of time, their daughter and her husband, who are relocating from Boston and want to start a new family, and in-law will be living in the ADU. The way this house designed to allow for multiple generations live at the same property while still maintaining their own individual space. Understanding the importance of the integration with the character of the neighborhood and our clients expressed a desire for a modern home, we respect to and harmonize with the surrounding community, we have chosen a modern farmhouse style. This style blends traditional country elements with contemporary aesthetics characterized by clean line, a simple color palette, and large window. The resident will feature gable metal roof, expansive floor-to-ceiling windows, and natural stained cedar wood siding. This thoughtful combination of the material and design elements ensure that the house looks attractive when blending with the neighborhood. One, the key feature of this house is a large picture window, particularly in the gable section. These windows provide ample natural light and connect indoor and outdoor. For the windows, a large window, we have designed interior lures for offer additional privacy when needed. Additionally, in collaboration with landscape architect, we are proposing some screening trees along the side setback and rear and front yard, where we have a tree, small windows at the right side of the building for further ensure privacy for our neighboring properties. And the rear balcony access from the master bedroom conform the balcony regulation and position 20 feet from side setback. Additionally, there are a full-height wall at the left side. As a result, the balcony will not have any privacy impact for the neighbors. We also given much consideration to neighbors' privacy by positioning the large window at the front and rear yard only. To help visualization of the, of this building, we prepared the 3D rendering for the proposed building, showing how the existing structure will transform into our client's dream home. We have strategically positioned the house and driveway to maximize the size potential while making every effort to preserve the street heritage tree. Community engagement has been cornerstone of our project. On May 19, we held a productive outreach meeting with our neighbors, and I'm so excited to say, we reviewed the floor plans and elevation, and I'm pleased to report that the neighbors expressed their excitement and support for the project. They appreciate the open communication, and their feedback has been invaluable about the privacy by, by tree screening. In conclusion, we are confident that this new resident will not only serve a beautiful home for John and Fay's family, but also add significant value for the neighborhood. It represents a thoughtful upgrade from current structure and reflects the collaborative effort of all parties involved, from the design team to the community. Thank you again for your consideration, and we are looking forward to your support for bringing this project to life. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment for this particular agenda item, I will turn to the commission and to see if there are any clarifying questions at this time. I do actually have a clarifying question. You referenced that as the eventual landscaping plan is crystallized, there's a discussion about trees. Could you tell me, tell us more about the trees that would be used particularly in screening on the left and/or right side of the properties?
Sure. At this moment, because we are on a planning phase, we just brought the landscape architect, we haven't hired him, but he has a consultation with us to just planting like a long screening tree at the right side of the property, which we have two window at the master, two actually narrow window at the master bedroom. And also, he is proposing for future, I'm saying for future means the building process, building permit process, he is going to be present the tree, or two or three, like a tall tree at the back of the, at the rear of the property for just being privacy between the master bedroom window with the back, back property.
Thank you for that additional detail.
Sure.
Seeing no other clarifying questions from the commissioners, could we please call for public comment on this item F2?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, for participants participating online, please press star nine on your keypad to raise your hand. If you have more than one speaker, please let us know at the beginning of your time, so we have, give everybody an appropriate amount of time. For those participating in the audience, please bring me a comment card.
Do we have any comment cards or hands raised online at this time?
I don't have any comment cards, and I don't have any hands raised online.
Okay, we'll give it one more moment.
Still no hands raised and no comment cards.
Thank you. Then I will go ahead and close public comment for this particular item, and bring the discussion and questions and conversations back to the commission, and then ultimately for a motion on this use permit. Who would like to begin?
Through the chair, maybe just before you start, if the applicant would like to take a seat, you don't have to stand at the microphone.
By all means, by all means. We will welcome you back up if there are specific questions, thank you, thank you. I'm happy to begin with just a couple of thoughts and questions. Let me just swift, switch over to that particular tab. So I appreciate the additional detail, knowing that there will be some trees that can help provide screening on the right side of the property. But when I did look at those plans, there are nearly sort of almost floor-to-ceiling windows, three of them on that side, and those are five feet from the property line and 10 feet from the house next door. And I can sort of, I can think about a number of instances where this commission has specifically addressed that in second, and in some cases, third-story windows, and said, we'd like something that introduces a greater opportunity for privacy. I know, I believe, if I've read them correctly, that right now, the house on the right side of this project is a single-story house, but it may be a two-story house at some point. And so for those reasons, I would like to ask the applicant if the applicant would consider, of course, leaving the windows. We all welcome the light, but I think there are options where the light, the panes themselves could be frosted or more translucent, you know, either in their entirety or sort of below like a four-to-five-foot line. I think aesthetically, that the preference is left to you guys, but I wanted to inquire as to whether or not that was something that could be considered.
Sure. Actually, the property owner at the right side, she's here too, and we talked about the screening tree, but if there is a concern from her or you as a chair of the committee, we can have like a half of the windows, like a translucent, and the glazing could be at top of the, from eye level. Is that something that you, you feel that makes the privacy issues resolve? We can do that, yeah?
Okay. Thank you. That's good to get that feedback. Thank you.
Sure.
And I think that was my primary, that was sort of my primary discussion point. I think as it relates to just the overall plan, I appreciate that it meets the zoning requirements. Aesthetically, it's not my personal preference, but that's irrelevant in this case. This is not a question to the Planning Commission of Architectural Control, and I don't think that it's out of alignment at all with the spirit of the neighborhood. And therefore, in my opinion, does not affect the request for the use permit. So I have, before we move to a motion, I want to be sure we get a chance for other commissioners to bring up any discussion points or ask any questions, including the points about the windows and the translucency of the glass, whether there's consensus or disagreement, always open for discussion. Other commissioners. Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. I was curious, since I'm still relatively new to the commission, with the concern about privacy, would that be, in your opinion, Chair Schindler, people looking into this property from outside or the other way around, this property's sightlines of the neighboring property?
Thank you. I think the, in my opinion, the role of the Planning Commission is sort of to be forward-looking from the community's perspective. So I would say that primarily this is about privacy to neighbors, current or potential in the future, as well as future homeowners of the property, but primarily thinking about privacy to other properties.
Thank you. Are we able to get input from the neighbor that is present? I don't know if that's appropriate or if that's a public comment opportunity?
I think the public comment opportunity has unfortunately passed, but I think that there was email feedback from property owners on all four directions, if I recall correctly, definitely three, I think, maybe four, and feedback and supportive feedback.
Yeah, in that case, my personal view is that since we don't have any request from the neighbor that would be affected by these windows to obscure them, and they are bedroom windows, aesthetically, I would personally not want my bedroom windows to be obscured. And I think the tree solution could potentially work, or something else that the two neighbors could work out potentially. So my preference would be to approve the project as is, but I'm open to hearing other opinions on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellen. Commissioner Beruzzi.
That was kind of my gut as well. I mean, I live in a two-story home with a bedroom window that looks out into some trees, and we could, in theory, see other people's houses. But I think it would be not nice to not be able to look out the window and see the leaves on the trees when they turn. And, I mean, you know, it's not a bathroom, so I'm kind of with you, but if it's a deal breaker, then I'll support the idea.
Commissioner Doe.
I'm just gonna go.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for going for it. I appreciate Chair Schindler for you raising the concern, and I agree, in the past, there's usually been a neighbor who had a very specific concern about privacy. I'm going to assume that the presence of the neighbor and already having done the outreach and if there were additional source of conflict, I imagine you would have made your opinion known. So I am going to also say, I very much appreciate you raising the issue. I think it's so important to be mindful when these, you know, side setbacks are so tight. But I am also supportive of the project as staff is recommending it. And I did have a question, Chair, you asked about trees and landscaping, and before, that question has arisen in my mind, and through the chair, a question to staff, Ms. Began. Sometimes there's landscape plans in the drawings we see sometimes that are not, and I just wanted to understand, are they not a requirement for Planning Commission review? Just out of curiosity, just want to know.
So landscape plans are not a requirement for single-family homes?
Great, thank you. They're very helpful, though, when they are included. So with that, I am supportive, and I don't know if we've made a motion, but I am happy to make a motion. And to be clear, Commissioner Doe.
To approve as recommended by staff.
Got it. So we have a first to approve the motion, the resolution as proposed by staff without any additional conditions or modifications.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Sellen. Any other discussion or comments? All right. Then I will go ahead and call the vote on this resolution. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Hi.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellen.
Yay.
I am also going to be supportive. So that is four yeses, three absences, and the motion carries. Congratulations. Good luck. Thank you for being here this evening. All right. That brings us to the end of a second element of the public hearing. We will move into F3, our next item, which is regarding a use permit for a business at 433 El Camino Real. The commission may consider and adopt a resolution to approve a use permit to operate a massage therapy business, which is considered a restricted personal service and a conditional use in an existing multi-tenant commercial building in the El Camino Real Downtown Specific Plan zoning district. Determine this action is categorically exempt under CEQA guidelines 15301's Class 1 exemption for existing facilities. Mr. Hochleitner, are there any updates to the staff report? I don't believe that there is a presentation, but I will ask nonetheless.
Good evening. Thank you. I do not have any updates for the report since it was written. We have not received any community input since the report was written. I do have the applicant here as well as their designer on Zoom, and they are here to answer questions. We do have, there is a slight language barrier, so we will have one of the other in their group to facilitate some translation if need be.
Thank you. Wonderful. Commissioner Sellen, I believe there was a remark you would like to just make at this time.
Yes, thank you. It was brought to my attention by staff that I am within about 1,000 feet of the project, my residence. And after consulting with staff and reviewing the circumstances and FPCC regulations, I believe I am able to make an unbiased judgment regarding the project, so I will not plan to recuse myself.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellen. Appreciate that. So just to be clear, does the applicant wish to make any proactive remarks, or shall we just wait until if there are questions that are relevant?
Good evening, everyone. Oh, good evening, everyone. Okay. My name is David, David Louis. I'm the applicant for the project at 433. I'm the applicant, so.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Before we move into public comment for this agenda item, are there any clarifying questions from commissioners about this project? I have a question for staff.
Sorry. Through the chair, the designer would like to introduce himself as well on Zoom.
Oh, please, please go ahead. Appreciate that.
Hi, my name is Felix, the designer for this project. I just wanted to make myself available if you guys have any questions, design-related questions.
Great. Thank you for introducing yourself. I think we do have a couple of clarifying questions, so this may be particularly relevant. Commissioner Beruzzi, I believe you had a clarifying question to start with.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for not bringing this to staff earlier. You may not be able to answer this off the top of your head, but I'm aware that we don't have on-street parking in front of this particular strip of stores and that there are the two sort of parking spaces in the back that historically were used by people working at the bike shop. And I know that when that parking was removed, council did some designation around the corner, college, is it College Ave? Yeah, on College Ave, to sort of facilitate short-term customer parking. And I'm just wondering if in your assessment, that parking is adequate? And I may not have seen it in the report, but I don't think there's any structured bike parking in this area for people who may want to get to their massage therapy place or any of the other places there without driving and having to park a block away or something. So I'm curious if that's been discussed.
I can address that. Thank you, Commissioner Beruzzi. There are five parking spaces which are unofficial in the back of the property along Alto Lane that have been used at various times for staff that work in either one of the units. It's also been used as storage area unofficially for the previous tenant, the Menlo Velo Bicycle Shop. As you're aware, AB 2097 has changed the minimum parking requirements for commercial properties within a half-mile of high-speed transit. So the Caltrain station does count, and then this project is within that half-mile window. So the minimum parking requirements would not be enforceable at this time. We do have had the Transportation Division look at this project, and they determined that the peak-hour trips would not surpass the previous usage. And so a transportation demand management plan was not required for this project. I don't know off the top of my head if there are structured bike parking in this area. That might be something that we can address with Public Works to have something done about that.
Thanks. I can't remember either, but I suspect not. I think this is one of those things that we haven't done on El Camino yet.
Thank you for that question.
Thank you for the additional detail as well. Were there other, Commissioner Sellen has a clarifying question?
Thank you. I had a question about the outreach. I saw that there was a log provided of outreach done to various addresses. I was just hoping to get more clarification on what form the outreach was in and whether any responses were received to the outreach that could be relevant. Thank you.
You said a question best addressed, is the designer able to address that question, or shall we address that question to the applicant themselves? Mr. Hochleitner, what's your recommendation?
I believe the designer might be able to facilitate that. He's got his hand raised.
Perfect.
Hi, yes, I would like to answer that question. So both phone calls and in-person meetings with the surrounding neighbors were surveyed to see what their responses were. In most cases, I think we were asking, we were kind of introducing ourselves and also inquiring on what the, I guess, the customers, in this case, how many customers frequent the facilities at any given day. This was kind of, there was a question that was asked from the planner on how it would affect the transit system and what impact it would make. And so we kind of posed that question when we did that outreach as well.
Commissioner Sellen, did that address your question?
Did you receive any feedback about the project besides asking about the customer, like the impacts to traffic, it sounds like, and public transit?
We did not receive any sort of feedback. If anything, there was more of introduction than hi.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellen. Are there any other clarifying questions before we move into public comment on this one? Okay. Seeing none, Mr. Hochleitner, could you please give instruction and open public comment for item F3?
Thank you, Chair Schindler. As a reminder, during this public comment period, members of the public will have an opportunity to share their comments or questions remotely by clicking the hand icon on your screen, upon which staff will introduce and activate your microphone. For those calling into tonight's meeting, please click star nine on your keypad and notify staff if you have a comment. If multiple people are speaking from the same account, please let us know at the beginning of your time, and we will make sure that each person gets a chance to speak. For those participating in person, please fill out a comment card and bring it to me. And I don't see any additional comment cards, and I don't see any hands raised online right now.
Thank you. We'll give it one more moment before we close.
I don't see any additional hands online.
Thank you. Then I will go ahead and close public comment for this item F3 and bring the discussion and any questions back to the Planning Commission. Are there commissioners who have discussion points or questions for the designer, for the applicant, or for staff? Commissioner Sellen.
Thank you. I appreciate Commissioner Beruzzi bringing up the point of parking, specifically bike parking. I believe last time we reviewed a similar project in the Willows, where it was like a tenant improvement situation. My understanding is that the commission cannot request or condition things that are outside the envelope of this facility. So in terms of asking to install bike parking, I just, I suppose, wanted to confirm with staff that that's sort of outside the scope of this conversation. Is that correct?
Thank you for that question. I believe that is correct. That might be something that we could address with our Public Works Department for bike parking along El Camino, some sort of the U-shaped bike parking things we put around town. Those might be something that we could address, but I don't believe that it is within the purview of the Planning Commission to ask the applicant to handle that.
Thank you. That makes sense. And yeah, in general, since I already disclosed that I live nearby, I'm not too concerned about the parking situation. I think there's plenty of parking around that area, and this is not a business that seems seems to require a huge amount of parking anyway, given there's just five rooms. So I'm not concerned about the car parking, bike parking, you know, cherry on top. And I don't have any other questions or comments. It seems like a good business proposal, and I would plan to support it, pending other concerns raised by other commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sellen. Commissioner Doe.
Thank you, Chair. Likewise, it looks like there are a few other massage places in the area further up on, north on El Camino, and in downtown Menlo Park, but in this particular area, it doesn't appear to be oversaturated with massage, so I think it adds in another place where people can easily walk over to and get a massage, so I am also supportive.
Thank you, Commissioner Doe.
I have nothing to add.
Thank you. All right. I'm just generally pleased to see another small business coming to Menlo Park, particularly using a space that is currently vacant. So I think that I am certainly, and I'm also, as other commissioners have said, very confident that patrons, as well as employees, are going to be able to find short-term parking really easily within one to two blocks, should they choose to do that without any hardship. And hopefully, we can work on the bike thing, given collaboration with the city. I do share Commissioner Beruzzi's recollection that there isn't any permanent, there aren't any permanent bike structures, and there are a number of commercial spaces in that vicinity. So I hope that's something we can incorporate into medium, short to medium-term planning for city resources. And I hope that when there is a motion, I will be supportive as well.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve, as staff suggested.
We have a first from Commissioner Beruzzi to support as proposed and prepared by staff. We have a second from Commissioner Doe, and seeing no other questions or lights on, I will go ahead and call for a vote on this one. Commissioner Beruzzi.
Yay.
Commissioner Doe.
Yes.
Commissioner Sellen.
Aye.
And I am also a yes, so that is four yeses. There are three commissioners absent, so the motion passes. Congratulations. We look forward to seeing your business, and we appreciate you being here this evening. Thank you all very much. All right, that closes the three elements of our public hearing this evening, and we can move on to the final section of our agenda this evening, which is informational items. Mr. Prado, would anyone from staff wish to provide an update on upcoming Planning Commission meetings or other relevant topics?
Yes, thank you for this opportunity. So just a quick update. So the next scheduled meeting is October 7th for the Planning Commission. That meeting is likely to be canceled, just given the way projects go in waves. We don't have any that are currently ready, so just making sure that there aren't any other items that need to be brought to that meeting, but given the public nosing requirements, I think at this point, it's likely that'll be canceled, which would then make the next Planning Commission meeting October 28th. So we are skipping the 21st, and the next scheduled meeting will be the 28th. We don't have any updates right now, but we're tracking a number of potential items, and so stay tuned. That concludes my reports and announcements, or informational items, excuse me.
Thank you for that update on informational items. Do commissioners have any other informational items to bring forward to the commission tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close up the informational item section and move on to adjournment, and I will call this meeting adjourned at 7:58 PM. Thank you all for being here. Thank you to the commission and to staff. Have a good evening.